Okay, we'll call to order the June 7th Planning Commission meeting. And first order of business is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. The agenda as it is, we can move to adopt it unless somebody had something that they wanted to add.
Well, as I understand it, we're not going to be talking about ELM care at all, so that should be deleted from the agenda?
Well, we're going, we have to open the public hearing to
Continue.
Continue it to the next time.
The next time.
So that's very brief.
It's got to stay on the agenda, but we won't be, we won't be really talking about it.
It's either that or we have to renotice it, and then I just find when you renotice items, then people get, the people that looked at it before, they get concerned that something's different about it, or I don't know. So plus it's cost, every time you do it, it costs the city money to send it out, so.
Yeah.
Although there are people that like came tonight that we turned away because they thought it was going to be talked about tonight and. And that's why we continue it to tonight is so they know, and if it was, I mean, the intent was that it was going to be on, but yeah.
But we do not.
I'm just wondering if the owner people need another reminder, though, next month.
Do we not pass that cost on of the notice?
Sure, but it is, yeah.
You said it costs the city. Does not cost the city.
Well, right, it, well, it costs the developer, so.
Right.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll be happy to second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then the Planning Commission meeting minutes from May 17th. And I only had one suggestion. On page, well, the second page.
Okay.
Under A, ELM, if you go down to the second to the last paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
I think, Mike, you refer to these as tortured sentences. The, where it starts, culces noted, and I am towards the end of the thing, the last part, site to resize it according to demand and to relocate it along the new road. It just seems to read better, just.
Sure.
Insert the word "and."
Yep.
Yeah. And then otherwise, did anybody else have anything?
I did.
Okay.
On the following page, last, bottom of the page, last paragraph, Plan Commissioner Sherwoodson, the last line there, include a trail, and it reads, "on the new road." I guess my intention there was that the trail would continue through the site connecting all the way to Howard. So that's a distinction, and I guess my correction would be to cross out "on the new road" and insert "through the site connecting to Howard."
Okay.
And then after the word landscaping, include along New Road and North and East Sides.
Yeah.
So the landscaping was, I mentioned it to be enhanced along, along the New Road as well as the North and East Sides of the development.
Of the building, okay.
However you want to word that.
Sure. Can you clarify that?
And then the other thing that I, that I mentioned that I thought was noteworthy was that I supported the trail alignment along 29, north and south.
Okay. So just say that you support the trail along 29.
Yeah, it's probably a new sentence, just, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else? Then with the edits, do we have a motion to approve?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have the SAC Wireless for AT&amp;T to add to their CUP three additional antennas on the tower that's down on Industrial Street. Is this a public, going to be, okay, so first let's just have Mark, if you want to kind of explain, and then we'll open a public hearing and go from there.
Sure. Thank you, Honorable Chair Commissioners. This is a request by SAC Wireless on behalf of AT&amp;T for a conditional use permit amendment to allow additional antennas to be placed on the existing tower located at 5115 Industrial Street. The property itself is located south of Industrial Street, north of Willow. On the existing, there's an existing communications tower located on that subject property. The property itself is zoned industrial and guided by the city's comprehensive plan as industrial, and it is approximately four and a half acres in overall size. There's an existing tower that is located on this property. Most of you are familiar with that tower. The city originally granted a conditional use permit in 2000, sorry, 1996 for that cellular communications tower. At that time, the original CUP allowed up to 12 antennas to be located on the tower. In 2016, the city granted an amendment to the conditional use permit to allow a maximum of 36 antennas to be located on the tower. And at that time, what it, what that CUP amendment had initially considered was three additional antennas being located. And it was at that time that the city recognized that between 12 and 36, we had no documentation of any additional approvals. So we amended the CUP to allow the 36 antennas. The additional antennas that were located in 2016 were located at the top of the tower, and in my packet you can see the pink circle, which identifies the bank of antennas that's at the top of the tower. So three additional towers were added to that location. The bank of antennas that's being considered tonight is the ones below that, the next tier down. And in this particular case, the applicant is asking for an upgrade to some of the existing equipment, and this is, this is happening everywhere in the industry right now. Every tower that I have some jurisdiction over from my cities, I'm getting bombarded by multiple requests to, the technology is changing so fast. So they're coming in, they're changing out the radios, the antennas, the, they're bringing new supply lines to this because they're trying to increase the performance, and so the demand is just what it is, and so all of these towers are retrofitting. So this is happening in a lot of cities right now. This is a request to add three additional antennas to that bank. Now, when we say three additional antennas, if you look at the detailed plan set of drawings, the antennas that they're adding are not going to be, they'd be noticeable and discernible if you knew what you were looking for, but if you didn't know what you were looking for and you counted the antennas, you'd probably count the same number because they're taking like an antenna that, well, the antennas are actually really big, and they're adding something to the top of it, which is an additional antenna, but it's kind of in the same configuration and pattern. So it's not like they're putting antennas in between the other antennas like you'd think if you were adding to that row. I don't know how to describe it, it's, you can see it in the picture, but not, you can't make it out in a, in the drawings. These are architectural drawings, so it's even hard to imagine. But in any case, they are adding antennas. We've determined that additional antennas need to come back for an amendment so that we can continue to track and at some point maybe say, no, we don't want any more antennas on our tower. But in, in any case, this is what they're asking for. They're asking for three antennas on that second tier bank. We reviewed it, they provided all the detailed plans and everything relating to that. In addition to the antennas, they'd be running a new mainline cable up the tower from some base equipment that's located at the base of the tower, but they're not really, they're not doing a lot of change to the base equipment. There's a cabinet that is going to be swapped out, but not really discernibly different as a part of that. So we reviewed it, we told them, hey, sorry, you got to come through the process. We don't have an administrative provision, plus you're adding antennas, and we think that just warrants us reviewing it again. A lot of cities then, what, what a lot of cities are doing is they're adding provisions to the CUP similar to the one that I wrote in this one, which would allow administrative approval for the replacement of existing antennas, so in place, if they're pulling one off and putting one back, as long as the size and location are consistent with existing equipment. And we say consistent because one could be three feet, one and a half inches, and the next one might be three feet, one and three quarters inches or something. So consistent is a subjective term, but we'd apply, you know, standard kind of reasonable sense to that. And then any expansion or increase to the size or area of the existing antennas or similar mounted transmission equipment, ground equipment, buildings, or number of antennas will be subject to the city's review and require a conditional use permit amendment. So really, it's just a provision that says if you're really just swapping out some stuff, you're not adding new, we can approve that so we don't have to do this big thing. I mean, they pay a lot of money to come in front of you tonight, and so I don't want my cell bill just artificially going up. I guess, I don't, but so that's the only thing, but anything new would still just come back through. You know, this, this, this particular tower's in a really good location just from an appearance standpoint. It is, it's back in the industrial park, you really can't see it. And when you look at what they're proposing, it's similar to what we approved in 16. This one's actually a tiered down, so I think it's going to even be less perceivable somewhat, but nonetheless, they're adding three antennas. They are adding some little things to the tower with that, some apparatus and some different support structures. But again, it's, it's something we've seen on other, other antennas and other towers, and it's not that significant. Really, I draw the line at those antennas because they're the biggest component on those banks. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is out of Chicago, and I told him I didn't know that it was necessary to
To fly in?
Come to a meeting, but, yeah.
Well, we'll open the public hearing at 6:16. One of the questions that I have, and I think you answered it, was on page two, you did say in addition to the antennas, they're proposing a new main trunk cable that you had mentioned, but it isn't on their application, that part of it. So then I didn't know if they really were going to do something.
They are, but they're, that typically doesn't show up as a separate component. I'm just noting it in the, in the report that they show a new mainline cable in their plan set. And, you know, any of the equipment, cabling, ice bridges, cabinetry at the base, we look at, and if they're adding something, then I always say, well, we got to look at it then. So in this particular case, when we reviewed this plan set, I, I said, no. The antennas itself kick it into the CUP, but then I just point out what else they're adding. But, you know, in this particular occasion, I mean, you're not going to know that they put a different cable up and through the tower, but.
And then I, I'm not opposed to, like you mentioned, if they're replacing something that they wouldn't necess, administratively, that could happen, and that if it was new, that they would come back. One of the things that I think we brought up then, or back in 2016 also, was that they keep making sure that the tower can handle the weight. So however that gets to be a part of, you know, I would hate to think that somebody just thinks, oh, well, you know, you can go and do it, you know, because even if you're replacing something, what if it was that much heavier, or I?
Yeah, I think it's a great point. We do require a third-party structural analysis of the tower every time.
Each time, okay, good.
And so they provide us with that. And it, it's really done through the building permit process that verifies that the additional antennas can be supported by the structure.
Okay.
But it's a good point, so, yeah.
The other thing is things are getting smaller, not bigger. I mean, you now carry in your hand your cellphone, the same that used to be a whole room full of a computer.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question. Maybe it's just a, maybe you already answered it, but the CUP from 2016 allowed for maximum 36 antennas, but yet we require them to come back every time they want to add, or are we, are we at 36 already?
We're at 36, so we're going to extend it to 39.
So they, we were at 12, and then.
No, we were actually when, in 2016, because I remember this.
It was much higher, yeah.
We, we were, yeah, they were, they were at, whatever they were wanting to do, it would have thrown it at 36. So somewhere between 12 and what they were asking to add, we had never revisited.
And, and to be honest, it's probably not any one person's fault. What these guys do, they're really, and guys maybe, what, the, the people who do the entitlement work for the cellular companies are all third-party companies. AT&amp;T doesn't have its own people, Verizon does, right? These are specialists in getting zoning entitlements. And what they do is, I mean, they're good at it. So they'll call the city, or they'll email the city and say, hey, we're going to make some changes to a couple of things on the tower that we need to do anything. They know what the process is, but this is literally the game. And then the city goes, well, I don't know what you're adding. Or the city will say, oh, you're just putting a radio on, or you're swapping out? No, you wouldn't need anything. And so it just, and if they don't get the answer, like if they email Nicole then, and they, she didn't get, give them the right answer, they'll email Bobby, then me, then.
Oh, the answer shop!
So they'll, they'll try to get the right answer so they can just put it in their file somewhere. I talked to the city, and somebody at the city told me.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. And that's how a lot of them do it. So they don't like me because when they call me, I say, well, send me a set of plans and I'll look at it for you, and then I'll tell you whether it meets the requirements or hits a threshold. Well, they don't ever have those done at the time they're doing the shopping. So then they have to actually go, they do, they always do the plans, but they want it approved and just one off their list because these guys are doing hundreds of towers at a time. So I ask them for the plans, so then when they finally submit the plans, I look at it. And if it is, like I've got another one, the same guy's doing in Independence, no additional antennas are being added, no additional base equipment's being added. He's, he really is putting some different brackets and then antennas on it, but he's taking something off and putting something on. But, and that one's going to be just building permit, so it'd be administered, an administrative approval.
Okay.
But I made him submit that set of plans same way, and I mean, I know who this guy is because he does it all over the place. But that's what they do. So from 96 to 12, you guys could have had just somebody call, you know, seven times and go, do I need to do anything? We're just, you know, we're not changing anything.
And then you get some, like, staff changes that, who knows?
You don't know. And they're good at it. They, they're good at telling you that it's not a big deal, and it's just a really small little change, and don't worry about it. And that's what they do.
And then voila, there are 36.
And we went from 12 to 36. I mean, that was a huge swing. But you're right, Stephanie, it's 39.
So it's 39 now, do we need to consider a new maximum?
Well, we would say 39 is the maximum number permitted on the tower.
Period.
Yeah. So that would get carried over, is that, I, I can't remember. If it's not in my proposed conditions, then we should add it.
Starts on page five.
So under the, under, under the recommendation, item two, we should add item two D. That says the maximum number of antennas. You guys should make that recommendation. That, that would be what I would take to the council in the resolution, but we might as well just make that.
Do we want to bump that up at all?
No.
No, because they, if they came back and said that it could still, you know, per weight or per space or per whatever, then we can change it to a higher number.
Yeah, I, I don't think you want to artificially put a number because we want to have, every time they do it, we want to have the certification that can handle it. And we won't know, you know, some, some of these antennas are smaller, some are bigger, so we just don't know what they're proposing, so.
And I also don't want them to be able to even wiggle around the idea that if you're adding something, because if we said, we'll make it, I don't know, 40, 45.
Right.
Then they could just keep doing it, and then we'll be at 60.
And every time they add antennas, they typically have to add something else, you know? Like a little panel or wire, or, you know, a new cable, and.
Another box or something.
So then, you know, I think it's, I think it's just good for the city. I, I like the administrative approval for swap outs because I really don't think that should have to come, come around. And I like this language being in the CUP because then it's recorded against it, and it gives the city a little bit of leeway to just say, what are you doing? Okay, no, you're swapping out. It says, it, it, it gives the staff kind of the authority to say, we've got approval to do that.
Okay.
And it's documented well, so I like that, but, you know, I'm bringing that to you as a, as a proposal, not necessarily that you agree with that, but, so.
Well, adding that D under two.
Yep.
To have the maximum number be 39, I think is, is a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's good.
Then the bottom of page four is probably just a typo in your, in your report, but stuck in the last line, the proposed tower, we're not proposing a new tower, it's just proposed new antennas, right?
Yeah, the proposed additional antennas is what it should say.
Yeah.
You probably can close the public hearing.
I should say the exist, it should say the existing tower, not the proposed.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing at 6:20.
Well, maybe Mike wanted to say something.
Comment?
All right, and is the cabinet, new cabinet you mentioned was, was going to be swapped out, swapping out one of the existing cabinets?
No, if you look at it.
I was looking at the plans, I couldn't see, it would look to be a new cabinet.
Well, it's a proposed surge protection unit. So if you look at page 82 on the architectural plans, it's, it's the equipment site plan, basically. It's in that big set, 8, page 82, or sheet 82.
Photo one, right?
And the, on the left where it says proposed and existing?
Here, yeah. See this thing? It's called a proposed RICAP surge protection unit. It's like a, it's like a cabinet, a stigmion of some sort.
Over here.
That, that they are adding, and if you look at then the next page.
Because I saw that one, you didn't.
You can, it, it says where it's going, but it doesn't.
You look at the existing elevation to the left, and it looks identical.
It looks identical, and that's why I was saying I don't, it's.
So it's not going to be, whatever it is, it's not going to.
It's not significant.
Yeah.
Right. And that's why I say these plans are hard to read, you know, when you're trying to go through the detail. But it, it looks like it's just like a cabinet that sticks off the side of an existing cabinet, and is a surge protection unit, so I don't, it's probably in some sort of an electrical cabinet, like enclosure.
Okay. Is the color of the new cabinet going to match the existing?
Everything over there is a brown tan color, so I'm assuming they're going to put brown.
And that's a part of.
You might add that to the.
Well, it, it's a part of the antenna towers in our, in our book where they have to be painted, let's see, F on page four.
Yeah, I couldn't find anything in their, in their architectural.
That said color.
That said what the color was going to be.
That's a good point.
It just said, I don't know, either said to be determined or by engineer or something like that.
Well, then add that to condition E.
Okay, hold on.
That the cabinet and antennas shall match.
Adjacent equipment or something like that.
Yep. Yeah, I think that's good. Let's just put it in there, and then we memorialize it, and then it's clear. It's better to be more clear with this than less, so.
Yeah, I'm sure these are all quite boilerplate type specifications.
They are, and if you look at the tower now, everything's the same, but they're, they're all gray and white. You know, on, like a lot of times on water towers and things, we, they get into the painting because you want them to match the water tower or whatever the, the back is, so you'll have them painted blue or brown or green or whatever your water tower is, so.
Right.
On this one, they are all that white gray. I don't think any of them are painted, but.
Okay.
You asked, 90% of the people in Maple Plain, where it was, they go, we have a tower?
You can see the light going at night.
Which is good, though, that they don't, I mean, this is a really well-placed tower.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I like it.
Unless they get rid of brush.
They need to see it.
Or, or junk that they shouldn't.
Right.
Well, then, let's see. Okay, so we would make the recommendation per page five and six, per what you had written down.
Yep.
And then what we've done is we've added, under two, we've added a D that the maximum number of
Antennas.
Antennas, thank you, would be 39. And E, that the cabinet and the antenna should match the coloring of the existing per our ordinance.
Per, per our ordinance or per the color that's there?
It's, um, let's see.
I think there's a choice in the ordinance.
Well, they, it says that it could be, I can't, I don't have the number here.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm thinking I read it, and it was like, could it be gray or green or?
Yeah, it, it's F, number F, or letter F in E. Non-contrasting color consistent with surrounding areas such as blue, gray, brown, or silver. My guess is they're either gray or silver up there, from what I'm remembering.
But do you want to give them a choice, or do you just want it to say matching?
I say we, we say that, non-contrasting color that matches.
Right, yeah. And it has, or have a.
Matches adjacent similar equipment or something. That matches surrounding equipment, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, yeah. All good suggestions.
Perfect.
Okay, so we would make that recommendation.
I will make that motion as you just beautifully described it.
Well, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then what we have is because ELM Care is still working on their plans, and to finish that, we're, I need to open, I need to open up a public hearing at 6:31 for ELM, but to continue it to, and here's one of the things that we need to talk about because the July meeting would be the 5th of July. And Bobby had suggested that that wasn't a good day. And so moving into the 12th, which I know even if you aren't going on vacation, would be a meeting day for you. So we need to make sure that we're going to have a quorum on the 12th because we would continue it to July 12th.
And part of it is the, not even so much the date of the 5th, it's the timing.
Because it has to go before the council, doesn't it?
They want it out, they want it, they, they need, ELM needs dates for us to consider, and we're trying to accommodate that, given that we had this change in road issue. They really are going back and redrawing their entire plan set because of it. You're not going to see significant changes in what you've already seen.
Just the location of.
Yeah, but for them to get a final approval, they've got to have full engineering, full stormwater and everything, which all of that had to be redrawn, you know, recalculated, redrawn, resized. And so they can't get it to us sooner. I mean, we, you know, when this road thing was coming up, we're like, well, can we just, you know, get this figured out, and then everything will be good? Well, with the shift of the road that we've all agreed to now, at least staff level and Hennebunk County level, the, their engineer team needs as much time as possible to get this done, but we're still targeting the July 16th City Council. That's why we're trying to, trying to just fit it in. And we also want to bring a full set. We don't want to, they were like, well, what can we submit? And we said, no.
No.
You got to just bring us the whole thing, all at once, all done, so you guys can review it, provide comments and recommendations, and then council will have an opportunity to review it. So that's what it is. So the 12th is kind of the ones that we, that was like the best date. We asked them if they could, you know, meet that 5th or meet the week before, and they said, no. They just, they physically just can't get it all done, and I understand that. I mean, you only have so many people and so many hours to work on this, and they have a lot of work to do. I mean, it's unfortunate, but I think we have really good agreement, though, on all the parties for the road location. So then it's just a matter of getting everything redrawn, basically, so.
Okay, so then. Okay, so then, um.
So that's July twelfth, if we can continue it to the July twelfth.
Is, is, are we going to have a quorum of people?
I will not be in town on the twelfth.
Okay.
Like, and I could do the tenth. Um, which is a Tuesday. That's just my schedule. Uh, Monday night is not the best for me, but.
Mardell, are you vacationing?
Like I say, if you buy me a tank of gas.
I don't think we can do those quint pro quo things. I like your thinking, though, Mardell.
I, the tenth or the twelfth are a possibility. I mean, it means coming back, but.
Barb and Barbara?
I'm not real comfortable with Stefan being gone either.
You, you're a yes?
Yes.
I'm a no to the tenth, because I'm, I have to work.
Okay.
Um, I'm a no to the fifth, I'm a yes to the twelfth.
Okay.
But I'm like with Mardell that I would like Stefan to be there.
Well, the seventeenth is the next Tuesday, or the sixteenth, I'm sorry, is the next Monday.
Right.
That's too late for them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're trying to, they need to be done so that they can get all their other financing and then their state stuff.
What, but what happens if we have issues with their new plan?
It's a whole nother issue. If we do have significant issues that we can't resolve, then.
It's waiting in.
It is what it is, yeah, and we can't promise them that they're out. We're just trying to target. Assuming that they're gonna give us a complete plan set that we like, we're giving them these dates. If, if they, if you have issues and you, and you can't recommend it. Then that's, that's their issue, not ours.
I know that it's not a vote, but, um, if, if we did it the twelfth. And, and all of the information was out to us, um, prior to that time, you know, like that Friday or the weekend before.
Mm-hmm.
I know in the past you've looked at things and written up comments and sent it to, um, staff. And we could read those into, um, into the minutes.
Are you going to be someplace where you can do a? A phone call?
I have a question.
Nope.
Well, I'm sure that's, that's not really part of, being part of the meeting if I'm.
No, yeah.
Uh, if I'm phoning in, right?
No, you can, you can phone in.
You would be able to do the tenth, though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if they can is my only problem, because I've confirmed these dates with them and their team, and I know they had some conflicts too, but, um, so these were the ones I think Bobby had.
Sounds like he may, maybe even the twelfth might be, uh.
Worked out, yeah, right.
I'm just thinking that the tenth, I could probably sneak in here, but I would not be able to be at the beginning of, you know, the, you know. I would, could probably get here at six thirty. I gotta twist my boss's arm.
Um, yeah, I don't know, I don't know what the conversation was with them outside of, about those dates, or if they had leeway in those dates, um.
I mean, all we can do is, I mean, if you want us to check on the tenth, um, we can do that.
Ask the question, and then, um.
And then go with the twelfth at the tenth of the word.
So if you, if you can continue the public hearing to the twelfth, if it's different date, we can renotice it. I mean, and we might renotice it anyway, so I'm not that concerned about it.
I would like to see us close it tonight and start over.
And that's fine.
There, because there's people that couldn't make it tonight, then they have no idea that it's being continued, I mean.
Yeah, especially if it's not, uh, the first Thursday.
Right.
You may have the group that came last month come on the fifth.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think it's fine. You, you can just, you can just close it and we can just renotice it. That's not a huge issue.
If we say we can't do it in July, I mean.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, they want.
Yeah.
Do they go leave?
Well.
They wanna get built.
Yeah, but they have, um, the, the issue is, and they're not trying to push us to make a decision, but they have a hard deadline with the state. Because what they did is they closed a nursing home in Watertown, and they only have so much time to re, essentially get. Take the rooms that they had allocated for that and reallocate them to a new facility that's permitted. And it has to do with how the state.
Yeah.
Uh, allows for certain number of, of rooms, and then something with the funding. They've explained it in, in kind of painstaking detail to just say they have some real deadlines that, that are out of their control. And we've been working on a schedule to try to hit them, um, but we knew it was a tight schedule. Well, now this road thing really has put a wrench in that schedule, so.
But then what happens if we have issues with their new plan?
They're, they're probably gonna ask for you to forward them one way or the other, deny or recommend the, the plan and try to, try to resolve it, right? I mean, or they're gonna try to resolve it upfront, um, so I mean, their intent is to provide you guys a full set, but. You're right, Mardell, I can't, we can't guarantee them approval, so I mean, and we can't do it by contract or anything, so. You, the city has their right to continue to table it, deny it, and I don't know what their timeframe does then. I don't know.
But I think it's really unfortunate that our plans last time, you couldn't read. This is what we needed, not plans that you couldn't read. And that they're being changed, you know. I mean, I think there's things in our. Zoning code that haven't been addressed, because there was no public hearing on it. We didn't talk about some of those issues.
Talk about what, we didn't talk about it because that we didn't have the complete information. And so all of that will be talked about in the next meeting. It would've been talked about tonight if they'd had everything done, but because of the road.
I realize that, but I think there were issues last time that didn't have anything to do with the road. That never got talked about. That never got brought up, and I didn't bring my zoning code book with me tonight, or I would coach you a couple. That ha- are, are a big problem.
Well, I, I think when we get the plans, then we have to make sure that we're talking about that. As I understood it, they were meeting variances. Um, or, um, setbacks, they were meeting all of the things that needed, including height, um, all of those kinds of things. So. Those questions are those, yeah, those questions that you have will be answered at the next meeting.
But I think some of them could be major. I mean.
She's saying they weren't asked, so they're not a little.
Asked.
Yeah, if, I mean, I would, I would say if you had something that you think is like major or detrimental to the project that you're thinking about now. I, I think Bobby and Nicole should, you should put, or we should at least have some discussion about that.
Cause they, but through all of the information.
Review that was done by the city for the package that was brought before you previously, they weren't asking for any variances. And they weren't asking for any, like, exceptions, so to speak, to any of the rules. Their intent was to meet all, all criteria.
Number one, I think they need a conditional use permit on this, right?
It's a permitted use in the mixed-use gateway.
Yeah.
No, it is not.
Okay, I guess I don't, I guess I.
And there is a, and I'll just throw it out there, because there's an ordinance says that anything with a chapel. Has to be fifty feet from any residential lot line. And like I say, I could read it if I brought it, but I didn't. And I don't think they're fifty feet from the residential, and they will have a chapel. And there's also one that says a parking lot has. There's also one that says you have to have a parking lot twenty feet from a residential lot line. I don't think they have, of course, I have a purple marker in mine.
Sorry.
Am I gonna say I have pink and I have yellow? Okay. Okay. Not undersigned.
So what you're suggesting is that when they said that they had met all the setbacks that they haven't, is what you're suggesting?
That's why I say I think there was issues that we didn't talk about.
Well, that night that they, they will be coming and talking to us again, right?
And that.
So we can go yes, no at that point.
Absolutely, and like, you know, Mark is saying we can't recommend or.
Stefan there too, because.
We can't, he's a great looker. Approval, you know, there's.
He's a.
Well, I didn't catch the things you're talking about.
What, yeah, I'm trying to, what's the conditional use permit? Well, that's one I'd be curious to know, so. You know, in our ordinance under mixed-use gateway, we say multi, uh, multifamily attached, residential.
So give me a page number of.
Well, and, and we, when you look at currently nursing homes kinda thing, fit into residential areas. So I'm not understanding why there would be a conditional use permit needed for something that goes in.
This is churches and other places of religious assembly.
Right.
And so that is a conditional use. I'm not.
Where is the list of what's permitted?
I don't know that I classify it as a church or a place of religious assembly. It's a primary.
And, and a chapel, in order to be considered a church, you would have to have.
It definitely says that, that one.
In order.
I'm, I'm getting closer.
Right, if you have a chapel.
I can't give you a page because it, I don't think it has page numbers, right?
Something has to be consecrated in order to be considered like a church. And they're not going to consecrate it because it'll be multi, multi-denominational. So there won't be something where you're saying, this is only Catholic, or this is only Jewish, or this is only whatever. It'll be a room. Are we still under, yes.
Probably.
Yep.
No, I think, I mean.
I have all this stuff in my bag too.
I think it's okay, I mean.
I would think.
Talk, I mean, yeah, Mardell, I think that's a good.
Okay. It's number seven under something here.
Number seven under what?
Go backwards to the, to the ordinance number.
Under conditional uses.
Yeah, and I agree with you. Under conditional uses, churches or places of religious assembly.
Right.
Are a conditional use and do require setback from residential adjacent properties.
Even if religion does not occupy the entire structure.
We're probably talking about one room in this large structure.
Right.
It, but when you read, and there, there must be a reason for it. I didn't write it.
For, what is the main purpose of a building?
No, I'm looking at zoning code.
I know, but what is the main purpose of like the church, or of a, if, even if you call it a chapel or a synagogue or a whatever, what would be the main purpose?
So, yeah, what's the, what's the intent of this ordinance? It's, it's, so if you, if you have a place, a church.
Building.
Where people are coming every Sunday or whenever, and you've got issues around the congregation of all these people all at once. This is not that. You've got, this is just a chapel room within a housing development that it's only used by the people that are, that live there. So I, I have a hard time specifying it as a church.
Yeah, it's not. It's a.
I don't know.
Or even a place of religious assembly, cause I mean, I think the chapel is.
Well, and it would be a place of, of.
They're not holding regular religious.
No.
They do at the nursing home now.
But is that one, would you consider that a place?
Consider that a church or religious assembly?
I don't know, but my backyard.
I don't know, but it's.
But do you consider that a church?
No.
And do they have like Sunday congregation where?
The public comes in.
It all comes, they all come in and go to mass there?
No.
Yes, I, I mean, that's.
For the residents.
Right, which I think is different, but.
Then how about the parking setback and standards from residential? Read this one.
Rear yard twenty feet would be the parking, or, um, I'm sorry. Residential parking, parking setback, MUG accessory setbacks from buddy properties. Parking setbacks twenty feet from residential. I think they're like thirty-five or something.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, but I'd have, I mean, I, I'm, I'm almost positive that they meet.
Well, yeah, cause I, you, you all went through all of this with them. You looked at all of our ordinances, you looked at the kinds of things that they needed to be aware of. I can't imagine that we would have not, that staff would not have looked.
Interesting point. I'm, I'm not, it's not crazy. I, I just don't.
No.
I mean, I, I mean, I respect the point. I think it's a good point. I don't know.
Religion by any means. That is not my point at all, because I am probably as pro-religion as anybody. But when I read that, that's how I read it.
But it, you're looking at one specific thing that doesn't fit the entire building.
It says the entire building.
But the entire building is not a chapel.
But it says in the ordinance, the entire building.
Because they're talking about a church, or a synagogue, or a temple, or a, something where the main purpose is religion.
I'm sure that it came about because of where the nursing home is right now. I don't know. That's not an old ordinance. And so I think some of our ordinance come about because of complaints.
I have to agree on that part, but I, you know.
I, I just.
But the issue around the church would be the impact of the public coming in for, for services all at one time, and the parking. And that, I mean, it's a church, but still, I mean, all that congestion is a nuisance to the neighborhood.
We don't wanna contaminate the neighbors by having them listen to anything religious.
Well, so I, I mean, I think it's an interesting point. I don't know, I can, I don't know that I can fully answer it. I think the interpretation ultimately comes down to, the council gets to interpret the ordinance. To say, is that the interpretation, um, but I, I would, I would probably, I would probably argue just my, my general sense is that it, it doesn't meet. We don't define church in here, um, but it probably doesn't meet that in its entirety, because they're not congregating. They're not bringing in outside people to congregate at that church. It's for their residence, just like the one that they have currently.
Room.
And I think the intent of that is to provide separation if you're bringing in a hundred people on a Sunday, and you've got parking and noise and, you know, all the commotion that goes along with it. The other thing I would tell you is, um, the property to the north is, um, guided MUG. Mixed-use gateway, not residential.
So even though there's residential.
It's residential use, it's guided, and technically what it's guided is what it, what that setback applies to. I just had this in a different city where I had a case and, um, had the attorney review it, and he said, he said that the issue is that. Your zoning has to comply with your comp plan, so even though cities guide a piece of property, but don't automatically rezone. your zoning has to comply with your comp plan. So even though cities guide a piece of property but don't automatically rezone it, which is technically what cities should do, but most cities don't do that, um, it's what it's guided, not what it's zoned. And so I had a commercial setback adjacent to a residentially zoned property, but one that was guided for future industrial and, or a commercial, and the, the finding that that attorney made was, this is, that setback has to be, you have to consider that property commercial.
And I think.
So I think that would change the setback then, but.
Right, and I, and I, I don't, I think if I look at the words, if you look at the words in the definition of that, or what it takes for something to be considered consecrated as a facility that is truly, truly religious. I'm looking at chapel as being very generic here. Very generic. It's a, it have, you know, someone is sitting down to have a contemplation with God, whatever their idea of God is.
The main use, which is residential, it's, it's a nursing home, just like you would have a kitchen in this facility, probably a commercial kitchen.
But I guess what worries me is that, you know, what if something comes up, or kinda.
Okay, what, what would the be, thing be that would come up?
Issues always come up, I mean.
I, and I, and I'm trying to, I am, I'm trying to understand, because I, I look at a facility like this, which they're in every single city in this, in the state, where people build such things. And what, I mean, there's masses of them up in the Saint Cloud area as an example. And they have, every one of them has something referred to as a chapel. And so what is it that would come up that the neighbors would think?
Even the, let's say the population. I mean, you've got a hundred and thirty-five units on less than ten acres. I mean. We, we don't have an ordinance that even covers that. I'm just saying, what happens if issues come up next time? I can't see.
But we, we are, the mixed use is looking at multi, multi-families, looking at multiple uses, looking at putting lots of residents, so to speak, into smaller spaces. And that's part of what we built in to the mixed use, the et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not sure what it is that.
Will have more people than we will on five acres than antennas, plus cars. I don't know.
Well, and that's, that's okay. I mean, that's part of the, what we wanted to do. I mean, if we had like a mixed use of, you know, like um, business on main floor and people on the top, you're putting multiple people.
Reasons there in front of you is because Medina didn't allow it as a use in their zoning. And they didn't know what they wanted to do, and that's why Elam came over here and said, do you guys allow this? Would we have to do a comp plan amendment? Would we have to do any of these things? And we said, no, it fits into that mixed-use gateway district. And they said, great, we wanna bring you a thirty million dollar project then. So, that was the, I mean, we had.
Objecting to the project.
But, but I'm saying that was the, that was, we, we looked at it. The other provision that, that the city built into its mixed use is in that mixed-use district, it says, right, in the zoning ordinance, that the list in the ordinance is not meant to be all encompassing.
Right.
And if there's a use identified that's different or not listed, it's up to staff, and then if staff makes determination that it is approved, and somebody challenges it, then it's up to the council to make a determination if that use is consistent with the intent of that district. And so, what I would say to your point on the churches, we're, we're gonna classify this as.
It's a nursing home.
Like a senior center, or senior living center, or something like that, regardless of the, the religious affiliation. And that we could say is a permitted use just by council determination, without variance or conditional use or anything. If we had other conditional uses like hospitals, or I don't, I don't even know, um, I was looking at other conditional uses. The churches is there, but this isn't a, close to a church, and I don't think it's close to a hotel motel.
No.
So if you look at all the other uses that are conditional or interim, I don't think it closely corresponds. I think it most closely corresponds to multifamily residential, which is what, it's an apartment building. So, I, I just think that if you, if the coun.